This conference will now be recorded.
Just in a moment of silence.
Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item to, for the meeting is consent agenda items, A, approval of minutes, and B, a statement of bills paid. If there are no questions on those, I'll hear a motion to approve.
Motion to approve consent agenda items.
Second, the motion from Councilman Shriver, a second from Councilman Adcox. Will the clerk please call?
Holman.
Yes.
Bishop.
Yes.
Malat.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes.
Item two on the agenda is request, requests or comments from the public. Just a reminder, if anyone's going to share with us this evening, you'll start by stating your name and address. You'll have three minutes. When we get toward the end of the three minutes, I'll give you a signal to wrap it up. And just a reminder that we cannot answer questions or respond from up here during your time. So, you don't feel awkward. If you ask us a question, that's why we can't respond. If we have anyone that wants to share with us this evening, now would be the time to do so.
Good evening. Three things. Two, the, I'd like to see on 110.
State your name.
Oh, I'm so sorry. This is not, not familiar to me at all. Mark Watkins, 531 South Fourth Street, apartment 408, Edwardsville, Kansas, 66111. On 110, we all know that there's heavily trafficked by animals. And I would like to request a couple of signs stating as such, going up, animal crossing, deer crossing, something for safety reasons. Also, I'd like to request a reduction in the speed limit, if possible, from 35 to 30 along that way. Lastly, if there's any way we can penalize our railroad company that causes us to be parked for over an hour while other things are going on in the intersection, that would be delightful. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Steve Johnson, 507 High Street, Edwardsville. First of all, I want to apologize for any future problems I may have caused to anybody last year. I think I got rid of all my birds. They went someplace besides my house. So, these hundred-plus birds, these vultures that come back, they're landing someplace, but they're not landing my place. So, I apologize ahead of time for anybody that gets them now. Secondly, just information-wise, I talked to Jerry Schrick at BPU last Tuesday about the main, Water Main going up High Street. I just want to let you know that we have a two-inch line that feeds 15-plus up there. He did put us on the list. List is wherever it's at. But he also offered, as soon as the weather gets warm enough, or it doesn't freeze at night, they're going to put a meter up there, up at the Woodbury's, to monitor the water pressure. Thirdly, he said if that would, doesn't cause too much problem. Thirdly, I brought up a sinkhole. I had a sinkhole show up between my street and my driveway concrete. And he was very concerned about that. So, they're going to do some investigation up there. It was about the size of a drum. It went down about a foot and a half, and had two feeters going up towards the street. I didn't get any water filled up, but I just want to let you know I did talk to them. So, I don't know if it, I know it's BPU's issue, but it may have come to a point where it terraced the street. Who knows? And thirdly, have you ever done a town hall meeting where people can come and sit here and ask questions and get answers? We don't, we can ask questions, we don't get answers. I tell you what, if you want people to be involved, you've got to give them that opportunity to get involved. Where they can be here, you know, talking to other people before I came here and start speaking my piece. And even my wife says, why don't you have this? You know, if you want to hear from us, we should be able to ask questions. Either have a town hall or have an extended meeting tonight for 30 minutes to give people opportunity to ask questions and get answers. But you can't. That's all I have for today.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
No others this evening? We will move on to item number three. Consider bid awarded to construct public works in parks, department maintenance building within the city park.
Mayor, Mayor Council, thank you very much. You have the background information before you and the information from our last meeting that said staff should progress this particular project. I'm inviting Brian Hutcheson, Public Works, to give the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to recommend the City Council to consider awarding a bid to Morton Buildings Incorporated for the construction of an 80-by-40 maintenance building and the associated construction-related services and amenities within the park, total of $310,000. This project includes $269,183, which was the low bid for Morton Building Incorporated, $30,000 for asphalt in the drive going up to the building from the parking lot, $2,600 for the demolition work, and $8,200 for utility relocation that needs to be moved for the site for this building to bid on. This, this project is a facility improvement that we've identified back in 2024. These expenses would be debited from the property acquisition fund, which has over $450,000 in its ownership. We solicited bids several months ago. Personally sent seven electronic bids out to companies that were into this. We've got two responses, plus it was on our website for almost a month with no responses. So, we've got two responses, one from Morton Building Incorporated for $269,183, and SGI Liberty Reserve for $278,565.
Do you want to talk about the differences of what's included?
Basically, the Morton Building is a complete package, concrete, six-inch concrete, two garage doors, awnings, stubbing through the concrete. This is a drawing of it, pretty close to the colors. Even I requested you get the colors. But it includes awnings, indoor garage doors, six-inch concrete floor, plumbing and power, plumbed through the, stubbed into the building, through the puddings as well, electricity for it, insulation for the old building, and a protective wood product around the bottom, the weight's going to protect it as well. With this drawing here, it's like there is an option that we could add the two cuplas on top of the building there for additional $6,000 if we choose to do that. It is not a structural, has no impact of the structural, doesn't help with anything like that. It's just a visual thing on that, but those would be additional $6,000 through it. Morton's building is complete with all this stuff figured into it. The SGI ones did not have, the awnings did not have the wraparound porch, the cuplas. Morton did have the stubbing in of the plumbing, but I believe it was only for four inches of concrete. So, we're recommending to the City Council, the City Manager, that will contract the building for $310,000.
Brian?
Yes.
Why don't you substitute the cuplas for a lift inside, so you can do some oil changes and so forth?
Like a vehicle lift?
Yeah. Substitute that six grand for that, you know, above-ground lift, right? And you'd have solved a lot of problems on raising vehicles now. And the other thing, did you say you would stub it for plumbing and so forth?
There'll be a plumbing, a three-inch plumbing line going through, and right now I have a stub for a two-inch water line to go through.
Or like a restroom probably, and I got to make a shower when necessary and there for the safety aspect. Motion guidelines and so forth.
Yeah, we're doing that for future. It's not going to happen.
As long as it's stubbed.
Yes, that's, it's a lot more expensive if you do it later on. So, do it.
I think a lift would be a good idea if you could, you know, get that $6,000 part toward it.
How tall is the building?
Yeah.
Doors are, the doors are 10-foot, the sides are 12. But they're putting scissor truss in there? I don't know if you know what a scissor truss is. Basically, the center of that's supposed to be roughly about 13 feet. It's in the center.
Basically vaulted.
Yeah, basically a vaulted ceiling.
Or you could put the six grand into a bathroom. One of the two. But I think a lift's a great idea. Make a four-post lift, pick up that 550.
You could take away a lot of subcontractor work on vehicles that you could do yourself.
That'd be something we legally vet, first, you know, insurance, that sort of thing, and then the actual cost. So, we could certainly take that under control.
Yeah, you can get a four-post lift for under six grand. Pick up 30,000 pounds.
You could save a lot of money while changing the tire team as well, before you go to jackals or whatever.
Yeah, I like the idea of the six-inch concrete instead of the four. Four's the sidewalk, man.
Yeah.
Park that 550 in there, it's going to crumble it away.
And then one other thing, Mark, we had, I talked to Brian about maybe possibly since some of the ditch repairs need to be made around here, the skid steer is maybe a little bit too big or not adequate to do some of the ditch digging and cleaning out that we need to have. We had discussed mini excavator.
Yes.
And I think, I talked with Brian quite a bit about that, where he could look at new versus used and versus rental for a day. And we have capability, if we buy one, of hauling it around, you know, not spending $750, but then also, you know, relaxing a lot of issues that we could have with dishes, ditches that get plugged up that we could clean out ourselves, which would kind of prolong the length of our roads.
We've had that discussion extensively and we're in agreement in addition to potentially taking over the work at the cemetery.
I would like to make the motion to approve awarding the contract to Morton Buildings for the construction of 80-by-40 maintenance building and associated construction-related services and amenities with Edwardsville City Park for $310,000, and authorizing the City Manager to enter into a contract with Morton Building for building construction services.
Second.
Move a motion from Councilman Malat, the second, from Councilman Bishop. Will the clerk please call?
Holman.
Yes.
Bishop.
Yes.
Malat.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes.
Very good. Long time coming. I just took that one forward.
Yes.
Item number four here, Stormwater Protection Prevention Program presentation from representatives from Lamp Ryneerson.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor Council. You'll hear this presentation. You might recall that we entered into a contract some months ago with Lamp Ryneerson and for our stormwater protection program. We were out of compliance, not unusual. But we haven't done the work that we needed to do over the years. And this is the catch-up. This is all the compliance, the state reporting and everything. This is kind of the final benchmark that is deliverable that Lamp Ryneerson needs to provide to us as part of this overall contract. So, I'll invite Autumn Schleicher. Schleicher. Come on up. Yes, ma'am.
My name's Autumn Schleicher. I'm with Lamp Ryneerson. I've been working with the city. Mark, Doug, Brian, and Trent, developing the stormwater management plan. And recently, submitted the 2024 annual report to KDAHE. And KDAHE is requiring the city to be fully compliant of this stormwater management plan by the end of this year. So, we developed it, but now we just have to make sure that you guys are doing all the requirements. And so, I was going to continue working with you guys to make sure, you know, we're checking all the boxes and doing everything that's needed. So, some of the big, uh, things this year will be some ordinance updates. We need to include some water quality design criteria for large construction sites over an acre. And then, we're going to have a new ordinance to cover illicit discharges that will allow the city to go onto people's property expecting outfalls, and you'll be able to trace it upstream to the source. It's not the same as a TMBL sampling. It's just outfalls that where the storm pipe or just conveyance of water enters the state of the, water's at stake, that's mission Greek. And so, we just be looking for oil, food, trash, smelling, any word smells. And then, we're going to up, we're going to create a detention and water quality basis inspection program for existing sites that are over an acre. We need the people, the owners, to do annual inspections of their bases to make sure they're cleaned out, operating, maintained, and then, yeah. And then, we need to be quarterly to make sure you guys are doing what you guys need to do. Also, part of the permit was to give an update on what an illicit discharge is. Basically, anything that goes down the storm drain, goes straight to the water, and it's not treated. And so, that's why we want to keep, you know, think about your pets. Don't dump oil, wash your car in the grass if you can. Don't dump carpet cleaning solution down, or paint wash water, don't do that down the curb. And the city is actually contracted with the county for the household hazardous waste. So, they offer monthly days to, monthly waste disposal days. Just wanted to share that information. And we're going to be posting the plan and the annual report on the Public Works website here soon. So, if anybody was interested to see what it was all about, check it out.
State report, you made, you made the state report as required, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. So, that was one of the objectives for sure. So, now it's a matter of.
Yes, yeah, the plan and the annual report.
Moving forward and staying compliant. And we will have some ordinances that we just need to update. We have stormwater ordinances already. And so, we just need to update a couple of those things. We just haven't done that over the years unless of all. So, we need to make a couple of adoptions here in the near future, and we'll have that before we pretty soon. Were there any red, any red flags on that? Bad ones?
We, we just recreated the whole thing. So, there was a lot of, I mean, there was not many checks being, there were any boxes being checked, too many. But you guys, I mean, we did, we pulled up enough for like the public education portion, but it was just getting the inspections, the municipal facility inspections done, and just creating these programs so we can start them this year, starting now.
Just for clarification, this programming, it's not testing of the water in the sense of what we're doing here, compliance-wise. So, if you meant red flags as was there a dirty water somewhere, that's, that's not what we're doing. What we're doing is fixing the program for state compliance, policies, procedures, testing, and some of the ordinances that we need. And state compliance for reporting, which is one thing we have failed several times.
Sure. What's the fine for that? Have we been fined for that?
Uh, no, because we, you guys hop on it so quick. And to get it turned around, they don't, you know, they're not that bad, that bad at sleepers. So, I just want you to keep moving forward and be, you know, working with them. And don't happen with that.
So, Mark, for us to be proactive in enforcing all of this, what does that require from the city? Is that like a code inspector to drive around and just, oh, I see a problem here, you know, they got a bunch of trash and dits, or they've got somebody dumping antifreeze over the creek bank? Or, I mean, what, what do we do proactively to prevent that?
Well, there could be some reporting and then us responding and then going to test. But when, when there's a certain amount of rainfall, there's certain projects, like big construction projects, where we're testing quite regularly. But when there's certain rainfall, we'll go test that in certain areas. Right? That's, so testing, and then we send that to a lab and they give us the results back. Or you have, you have an event where it's discovered, hey, somebody's running a bunch of gasoline down this thing. We're going to test it, that sort of thing. And then it becomes a code enforcement issue. This is all health, sanitation, all those, welfare, all that kind of stuff. So, if there's some illicit discharge and it's against the ordinance, it's an ordinance violation, we can handle that. Also, we can work with the state as well, depending on what level that it's taking place.
And then there's going to be ordinances protecting us to where we can bind or whatever.
Yes, we already have those in place. They're just not quite up to date. And we'll add a couple that we're just missing because these programs evolve with the years. And it's been some years since we've really dealt with them in our ordinance lines.
Yeah, penalties are required to be included in ordinances for the KDAHEs affected. So, nobody's getting ticketed for washing their car on the driveway?
That's, that's, no, that's an education component, you know. Now, if you're dumping gasoline from your driveway, right into the sewer system or the water system.
Because we're also, we're supposed to park our grasses, so. Right. Well, I just wanted to be clear because when the city posted that, and that neighborhood base, we picked that was one of the questions. They're like, well, where are we supposed to wash our cars at?
Yeah, it's one of those kind of catch 22. It's just that the public service stuff is more about, these are good ideas. You know, recycling's a good idea, but it's not required by law, right? Those kinds of things. So, you have, but dumping gasoline, that's a perfect example. Get your mower and you just dump the gas, or put your yard debris down the storm drain. Those things are technically illegal. And, and so, the upstream checking, that's what they, by going on the property, she may have mentioned of that, so that we have this outfall area, this discharge area, that we, okay, this is where it's happening. Now, where is it? Where, where's the source? So, it's upstream, right? We're going up and going to go take a look at, well, where is this coming from? What could be the source? So, we will do some of that investigation. We'll have state resources that'll help us out if we call them in, that sort of thing. So, again, our cleanup is about ordinances, getting them up to date. I don't know if we charged anybody in my history here, it's been a long time, with any violations of this. But we certainly don't want to be non-compliant and then somehow sanctioned by the state. So, this whole project was about getting compliance. And then we have a baseline from which to work. And as you heard mentioned, it's been a while that, that we've really paid any attention to this thing.
Yeah, and hopefully with the, uh, the new plan set, we'll have, we have better documentation and better standards, standard operating procedures for, you know, anybody, I mean, I'm not saying that there's immediate turnover, but, but something will be in place. So, the next, the person that's coming along will know what to do. That's what we're trying to do. I'm not, I'm not saying that anybody can.
They did a really nice, good partnership. They did a nice job. We're going to, we're going to continue this relationship, time and material, as we go forward. So, that's how I'm going to handle it. Because we're going to need their expertise as we move forward. Okay?
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you very much.
Item number five, consider a bid award for gravel excavation, soil restoration, and road-based installation at the city park.
Uh, once again, Mayor, Council, I'm going to call on Brian Hutcheson. Thanks for yielding our guest.
Okay, yes, I do. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item number five, City Council to consider awarding a bid to Kramer and Sutton Escavating for excavation services and sidewalk construction at the city park. Authorizing Mayor to enter to, or Manager to enter into a contract with Kramer and Sutton Escavating. The contract for the excavating services and the sidewalk construction is $48,174, and the payment will be debited to the special sales tax, which has adequate funds with this. This project also was back from late 2024. Talk about improvements down at the park. We just turned in more green space down there. I think we showed the pictures of what's going on. Basically, anything that's in the gravel around the concession stand will be put back into grass and be green space. Additionally, what was reached out there for bids was to bid a sidewalk, a sidewalk from the parking lot, bleacher pad. So, the sidewalk leads up, you have to go to the bleacher pad. Bleachers would sit onto the concession stand, from the concession stand to the other bleacher pad. And then a picnic area up in the front of the concession stand for picnic tables to sit on on that. So, what was bid out was, I took bids for just the green space, bidding onto it, and then we added it into the sidewalks as well. And I reached out to some contractors. And Kramer's and Sutton Escavating had the best bid for both. They basically came in low for the green space, but then they also do concrete work. So, when you put them two together, it's one contractor doing all the work. You don't have the scheduling nightmare with that. There was bids solicited just for the sidewalk as well, to add on to these companies that didn't do it. And there again, Kramer's and Sutton came in low on both sides of it, of that. Basically, the outbreak of the bid was Kramer and Sutton's for $48,174. T-Signs Construction, that did sidewalks and the green space, was 57. And then I show Sutton's landwork, which was no sidewalks, was just 27. But when I took another sidewalk company to put in with Sutton to get the work, it was going to be more than what Kramer's and Sutton's.
Are they going to extend the patio around the current concession stand so that if we make the restrooms where people can actually use them during practices and games, where that would be the entry?
The, the south side is getting six foot added to it, south.
I think that would be on the east side, though. Where the rest, like, if we were to make the restrooms accessible.
Well, restroom on the south side. On the south side, the sidewalk's going to basically come up. You'll have a bleacher pad on to the right where the bleachers sit down. It goes on up to the concession slab that's there, but there'll be a six-inch, I'm sorry, six-foot added on to what's existing. But then it also goes out around to the front of the pad that's there now, additional 16 foot of this. So, I believe your answer is yes.
Ryan, do you have any, like a schematic of what you're doing, or are you just describing one for?
I'm just, just.
You know, for this kind of money, I'd kind of like to see a view over the top of what's really happening as far as sidewalks and all that. Is that something ridiculous to have?
No, no. And what we showed you before didn't have the sidewalk pieces of it in it. But what we showed you is the green space replacement, and then the base road coming in, and that we would asphalt that. So, that was a piece of it. But the, but the sidewalk piece, which we had in mind the whole time, was the schematic. We just weren't ready exactly where we're going to lay those in. We do need to put concrete under the bleachers.
What did you show the contractors, you know, for them to know?
It's actually drawn, I've got it painted down at the park on the gravel. I'm terrible at making bad pictures and stuff.
Was there any way we could look at, maybe table this and look at that, or is there a time element on it where it would need to be in tonight?
The only time element that we have is sports, some activities. We're trying to work around getting that. That's the only, you know, and I, T-ball, softball, soccer.
Soccer starts.
Well, and that was one, one question I had very recently of a family who participates in soccer. And they have relatives who are in wheelchairs and walkers and things like that. And so, they asked about a sidewalk that would lead to the soccer field or make it easier for grandparents or people with strollers to access, to be able to access the, the fields and then the restrooms. I know where the restroom building is, but I'm saying like, if we were to do any modification to that restroom to make them usable during practices and things like that, right now, I don't believe there's a concrete pad on the east side of the building where the restrooms actually are.
The west, right? West side.
West side. I guess.
So, if you're thinking, you know, wherever traction to the north, to the right's going to be your east side, south, and then west. West was, should be where the restrooms are.
Where the restrooms are in that facility. So, I'm just wondering, like, are we looking at that overall picture and accessibility to the shelter and the playground? Was another concern that they had really comps with wagons and strollers and, you know, older people with wheelchairs.
I think that's right. Where a schematic would help us if we could look down on it. Because the restroom entrance is on the south side of that building. And the concession stand is on the east side. West side, which is the blank wall.
Well, I, I know that, that I'm talking about. If we were to make it accessible from the outside, that would be the, not the south side.
Not to belabor it, but. Not to belabor it, but we have the schematic from last time. Could we bring that picture up? I don't mind the delay if we need to table something, but this may help. And if there is some, you know, some support for more concrete than we thought, we were just going, hey, we need to connect this ball field to this destination, which is the concession restroom. Now, if there needs to be more sidewalk around that, we can certainly add those things. We know what the linear feet is gonna cost us. This contractor's already gonna be there. So the overhead, right? We're not mobilizing two different units here, right? So these things could be added. We could draw up a better schematic, but.
So we could
Oh, okay. We may, we may ruin the whole media presentation by doing something out of the ordinary.
I was gonna say, we we could switch five and six and come back to this if we get the schematic up. And if that's enough for us to understand, that's fine. And then if not, we could, um, table it like Councilman Mullott suggested. I I agree. I think it would help to be able to visualize what we're, what we're talking about.
Oh, there you go.
One last time without even. I'm sorry.
That was from last meeting.
I can, I can go produce one, zoom in, those are two.
That has the sidewalks in it as well?
I can draw.
There's a suggestion, we could table this for the minute and go to number six and then come back.
I can, I can, I can draw something up, take a area photo and draw it where it is and bring it back. But the phase one is kind of basically from the concession stand. That shows a little bit bigger, it's at the west end concession stand. To the east is my phase one. Phase two, we want to incorporate that soccer field, um, and stuff in it. Now, the first focus is just on that one. The west end of the concession stand has no doors in it. It's where the AC unit is and all that. Your doors for your bathroom wall, your door for your south. So it, what I, what I have planned in this is not have sidewalk on the west side. I I know that it doesn't have a west side because there is no doors there. Does it, does there need to be sidewalk? Sure, that's debated, but right now, it's not in the plan mainly because I'm kind of focused from the west wall to the east, the building, the green space, the gravel that's in there now.
So somewhat in a U, the north, the east, and the south side will have improved concrete areas, is that correct?
Was for the whole city.
We've got it in front of us.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Right.
So basically, what the thirty, the thirty-nine hundred, uh, linear feet is from the existing pavement here, it comes up, this is concrete for bleachers to sit in here, ties on to it, kind of angles, comes up to here, six foot around to here, the twenty foot around to this, side over here. Then there's a sidewalk that goes over to the bleachers over here with the, I think they're twenty-four by sixty pads and bleachers gonna sit on some of the side, gravel underneath the grass underneath the pit of coal.
If we added that to the north side, would that satisfy, we could add another six foot by whatever the length of that building is to tie it into the restroom on the north, the door on the north?
Right?
Maybe maybe
Wrap it.
Yes.
I, I think that would help with compliance it for people. And especially the concern before for the restrooms was if you're entering into that hallway in the middle, then if the concession stand wasn't secure somehow, and there was some sort of like, security issue, where if we were able to put exterior facing doors on the restroom, kind of on that side of the building, then people could go in and out and without interfering with concession stand, security or function at all, um, without having to build a brand new building. And then the other question that was brought to me was from the parking lot to the sh- the playground. They said it's just like a mud pit and it's really hard to get there.
Are you encouraging maybe that we put those in sooner than the next phase? Because that was part of what we were thinking, is a phase two, but we don't know when we can get there. But the, but the concrete will be out there, right? We're gonna be building sidewalks. It's maybe the time to do it. So I think money wise, we could get these things done and drop. Now, this is about, what are we thinking, a thirty, no, it's not thirty thousand, we're doing forty, uh, do you remember what the, so far, the sidewalk piece, twenty-five thousand? So we need it better, about ten more thousand-ish in that particular piece.
So maybe even if we just did around the bathroom, since he's gonna be right there anyway, and then phase two would be a whole separate. I just thought while you're there.
Phase two is about moving some of the park playground a little bit north, the pickleball proposal, those sorts of things. So it's phase two in the plan. We don't have to build all those things that's under your approval, but that's how it's proposed. So then we tie those things in with the sidewalk. If you build a sidewalk to a playground now that may move, it's probably a waste of money, or you have to extend it in some bizarre way.
Right. That makes more sense to do all at the same time, if we thought out intentional, but maybe just while we're doing the bathroom space now.
So to finish out the rest of the concession stand, I'd say another five thousand?
Six, six forty-nine square.
Linear feet, right?
Linear feet, six forty-nine.
You know, it, this is somewhat a not to exceed, if the council is comfortable, we can push this to about fifty-two five somewhere in there, and that we could probably get this whole thing done that way. We just didn't factor in like you were thinking. I think it's a great idea, just capture that north side, get us wide enough, compliant, up to that door that's on the north side for the restroom access.
And then really, people could, if they have to be in a wheelchair or something like that, if they're watching a soccer game, they might be able to access the back of the building to sit and watch their kids and grand, grandkids play, um, from that side of the field, if they can't get out to the grounds.
Again, timing is, we need to get grass in the ground, soil back, so s- more delay, more delay. If, so the next time, we would be, be two more weeks into spring. That would be my only concern on the excavation.
So maybe if if we want to, Garrett, do you feel like you can see one of them?
I, you know, I, you're saying about another five grand on top of forty-eight one seventy-four?
Yeah, you, give me some room. I don't wanna, I'll overspend this if you tell me to add more stuff.
Yeah, because I, I tell you what, I've got all the confidence in the world in Brian.
Yeah.
I, you know, at first, I I would like to see it, you know, just look down at it and see exactly what you're gonna do. But with what Caroline said, with the mayor saying and and what, and what Brian's expertise, I think that we could probably rely on him to do a good job for us.
I think our pledge could be, we could mark this up and you could see it visually. We'll send it out via email. That, and then if you have any other feedback, we can consider it.
So, you know, and you say, you know, just not to exceed fifty-five thousand, that would be twelve, seven thousand over. Doug, with that, you think that could be helpful? I'm prepared to make the motion then to approve the contract, the bid to Kramer and Sons Excavation, as per our discussion tonight, and increase the bid amount to fifty-five thousand, not to exceed.
Second. We have a motion from Councilman Mullott, a second from Councilman Schreiber. Will the clerk please call roll?
Bullen?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Mullott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
Moving forward. Um, item six, consider request to rename the annual Autumn Fest Community Festival to Tater Fest and authorize the festival budget.
Mayor, thank you. Mayor Council, you have the background before you. Interesting project. Uh, wasn't sure, the name proposal, uh, just kind of triggered, is that this name has changed a couple of times, but historically, it's been Autumn Fest. And so when we moved it to the spring one day, uh, it couldn't be Autumn Fest anymore. So they, that creative back then, looking at the minutes, just researched the history. I only referenced to two thousand and five. It predates two thousand and five. I just said, okay, this is at least a benchmark of, did we have a ten years, fifteen years, twenty years? What was it on Autumn Fest? And there is a lot of, uh, minutes that reflect the Autumn Fest name. It is, it it's historic every year. There are permits issued, you know, special use to come in, sell, sell a beverage or whatever, a run, those kinds of things. Uh, and and then we know that in two thousand and thirteen, we decided because of weather and some, you know, Tiblo days was one of the other issues. Couldn't get volunteers from Chamber and thing, because they were wore out for Tiblo days. And that's a, that's a, that's even in the record. So there was a opportunity to move it to the spring. Uh, Councilman Bishop becomes one of the, uh, coordinators because of the barbecue. And uh, in two thousand and thirteen, that was the first time we heard Edwardville days. But once again, the council was apprised of those things. There's lots of discussion. Uh, Mr. Bishop, even in the record, invites people to have a volunteer. He needs lots of volunteers for the festival. And we did that for a couple of years. Then we hit our hundred year anniversary. In my, my history, the best festival we've ever had. It was so good of a turnout. It was very simple, you know, sack races, kind of old fashioned, that kind of thing in the park. So we continued that for a couple of years of having a picnic in the fall. So we had this Edwardville days and a picnic. And then we went, holy cow, that's a lot of work for four or five people to kind of coordinate. We, you know, just, we didn't have a capacity. It wasn't a turnout quite like we had had. And so there was a change back. The council said, yes, let's go back. They renamed it again, back to its original Autumn Fest, third weekend in September. So those things were kind of formalized. And so here we are, there's a proposal. There was lots of discussion with the kind of the event planning committees. The mayor has sat in on that, thought maybe, as I put in the background, as she can explain certainly, that maybe a Junius Groves tie in somehow, and then move it to October. We all know September, uh, sounds late in the year, but it's frying hot, right? And and that's maybe a deterrent for getting some folks to come out. It's even hotter on on asphalt, you know, and where we are by a big white building. Uh, so there was this proposal. And so again, our recommendation is you consider it and just decide. But I think it was your purview to decide whether or not we both change the name and move it. Uh, so you have these options to change it to Tater Fest and move it to October. I do, I don't mind the October movement whatsoever for the heat. Maybe we get a better turnout, that sort of thing. But yeah, I think it's for your purview to decide if the name change is appropriate. So I'll leave it at that.
That's something that, um, so in the last several years at Autumn Fest, it's just kind of dwindled. And we'll go down there and there's a lot of effort and a lot of work put into it. You have like six people there, um, because it's a hundred and five degrees where it's pouring young rain. And so the thought behind it was just revamping it all together, making it something very unique to our city, embracing our history, and, um, making it more of a fall event, uh, starting it even a little bit further from Tiblo days, um, to have some uniqueness in our identity there. But, um, as we get closer to fall, then it's hopefully a little bit cooler weather, a little easier for people to come out, and then rebranding it to try to get some momentum behind it as well.
Mayor, I'll just add, the eleven thousand dollars is over my individual spending authority. So you need to authorize the budget, so.
Is that, that's typical for the Autumn Fest as well?
It fluctuates, yeah, over the years. But one thing we do have is sponsorships would offset thi- these expenses. So usually we take in sponsorships, they pay for that. And so that goes back into the special event, uh, fund that we have.
Has the family been notified about this? Groves family? I mean?
Not, not, not from staff, no.
Not, I mean, nobody has asked them if this was okay with them? I don't know. Because nobody grows potatoes commercially in Edwardville anymore.
January and July.
Yeah, you think.
From, from, I'm reporting the background. From, from my understanding, Mayor, correct me, is that I think it was somewhat in honor of that, rather than it's not a festival of their family. They can certainly come, but it's a whole celebration of the city. That's what I understood.
Edwardsville.
Yeah.
I would, I would ask the family if they were, you know, why not? I mean, it's honoring their, their ancestor, you know?
On a personal note, I'm not in favor of the word Tater Fest. I think it's kind of cheap sounding, Alabama sounding. I, you know, maybe Potato Fest. I really like Fall Fest better for Edwardville days. I just, the word Tater doesn't, it hits a note with me. And that's just my personal opinion. And I know I'm only one, one person up here. Potato farming, we've got a history of potato farming, farming in my family because of all of this property over here. When I was a kid, it was potatoes. That's what I did in the summer. We didn't call them potatoes. We didn't call them spe- called them potatoes. I'm sorry, but that's my personal.
That's okay.
That's, that's what raised me.
And and that was kind of in mine too, is it's not just one particular family history, but just Edwardsville history. Um, that was actually a name that somebody from the community had suggested. Oh, there was a lot of, oh, yeah, we love that. That's really cute. And, you know, wanting to move forward, but, um, open to, to options. I just, I didn't want it to be super generic, like fall or autumn, because everybody has, every church has an Autumn Fest or Fall Fest.
Tater blown down at Lambert's through.
I'm gonna make the motion to consider the renaming the annual Autumn Fest Community Festival to Tater Fest and authorize festival budget. To approve it.
Any second? Second.
Okay.
So the third weekend, everybody knows, eleven thousand dollar budget, third weekend, Autumn Fest, correct?
Can we just vote on that? The money?
You sure could, yeah. I, I think you, by
I think they should.
Hopefully you'll all be involved in supporting the event and volunteering.
So are we changing the date? Is it still gonna be in October or is it gonna be in August?
I think there can be some modification. You want another motion and to move the date, still with the Autumn Fest name, you can do, you have these options.
Well, what day is a race in October? I think it's the third, twenty-seventh, is what we can do.
In October, you mean?
So we're not gonna be conflicting with the racetrack?
That's the last one.
Or September? Oh, it's September? Okay. So we won't be conflicting with them at all?
Because I don't really care about the name, but moving it and the budget.
Mayor, you can call for a motion.
So we could make another, maybe amend the motion to adopt a different name in the future, changing the date, adopting the budget.
Changing the date.
Changing the date and adopting the budget.
So I make a motion to change the date of Autumn Fest and adopt the budget for the community festival. Um, yeah.
And then maybe we could have some input for name ideas or something like that.
Yeah.
So the record's clear, it's the first weekend in October. Not a specific day exactly.
Would it be the first weekend every year?
I'm wrong.
Saturday?
Our history has been the third weekend in September, no matter what those dates are.
So then the first weekend?
Well, I don't know.
October or the second? I think this time is the first of, we're targeting the second future. Yeah, so how about a Saturday in October? And that'll leave more flexibility.
Right.
So
Can I, can we do that? A Saturday in October, approving the budget. Is that?
Yeah, it'll fall in the month of October.
Yes.
And for twenty twenty-five, approving this budget.
Okay, so how do you want me to put it?
Amending the motion
Okay.
To a Saturday in October, approving the budget.
Okay.
All right, cool. Here's a motion.
I amend the motion to a Saturday in October, um, approving the budget and then possibly changing names in the future. In the future, yeah.
Second.
Okay.
Motion from Councilman Adcock, second from Councilman Mullon. Will the clerk please call roll?
Yes.
Bishop?
Can I hear the motion, please?
Can you read back a motion?
Uh, was change the date to a Saturday and approve the budget?
No.
A Saturday in October to a Saturday in October and approve the budget and then considering a future name change.
Consider a future name change.
That way we can get
No. No, you don't have to, because there was already discussion, just, sorry.
No, you're good.
We had, their discussion is over because we have a, we have a motion and a second, is that correct? And so then we're moved to discussion. The discussion was read back the, the motion. And the motion is, we're gonna have Autumn Fest in October and approve the budget with a name change consideration in the future.
Yes.
We have a motion and second on that motion. That's your motion and that's what you second. And everybody's agreement? And the roll call is?
Bishop?
Yes.
Mullott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mullon passed it off, is that correct?
Wait, that's what I did, yes.
He didn't vote. I don't think he voted.
Mullott did.
Yeah, he started.
Okay, sorry. Okay, we just wanna double check.
I was, I thought we had missed somebody too.
Yeah. We, I think we're right.
So we can work on the name later.
Yes.
And now at least we can plan.
Yeah.
And get things booked.
I like the day change for sure.
Okay. Good.
Excellent.
Item number seven, consider a motion to recess new executive session for KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B two for consultation with legal counsel, which could be deprivaged in the attorney-client relationship regarding
City attorney, city manager, and litigation attorney.
For how long?
How long, sir? Are we starting? Uh, no, this is on litigation. The next one is with Courtney, is that correct? Let me see.
Eight is for
I thought we were coming in separately, right?
Seven says, uh, for central litigation and eight Seven says, uh, for central litigation, and eight just says attorney-client relationship.
We're bringing you an attorney to client privilege, and we're bringing you as litigation counsel, separately, at your request, right? Yes.
If we need to s- adjust, you guys just let me know.
I think this is consistent, we're gonna bring the counsel, the city attorney, the city manager, and litigation attorney.
And how long do we think?
Sir? Twenty minutes.
So to return at seven-ten?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, anyone would like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion, I'll list it all.
As stated, ma'am.
As stated, to return at seven-ten.
Okay, uh, Councilman Shriver made the motion, Councilman Mullen made the second, will the clerk please call roll?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Lot?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Adcox?
Yes.
See, I guess.
This conference will now be recorded.
So a motion to return.
Make a motion to return to regular session.
We have a motion from Councilman Shriver, a second from Councilman Malott, will the clerk please call roll?
Mullen?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Lot?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Adcox?
Yes.
Uh, item number eight, consider a motion to recess into executive session pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B two for consultation with legal counsel, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Um, about how much time do you figure?
Spend five.
So to return at?
Fifteen, safe.
Seven-twenty-seven? And this would include, uh, Courtney Coger, our, uh, governing body, legal counsel, and our city manager. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to recess and executive session returning at seven-twenty-seven with legal counsel, city manager, and counsel.
Second, we have a motion from Councilman Shriver, a second from Councilman Adcox, will the clerk please call roll?
Mullen?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Lot?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Adcox?
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Make a motion to return to regular session.
Second, we have a motion from Councilman Shriver, a second from Councilman Adcox, will the clerk please call roll?
Mullen?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Lot?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Adcox?
Yes.
Item number nine, city manager report.
With the laboring, once again, I mentioned that these things roll in as, uh, the day goes along, and after Friday at five o'clock, uh, what I have for you is, first, let's take care of the tough business. We have that into the, into the building, which we have renters, uh, and, but we have a building being built, and that is scheduled for October. Every bit of sixty feet of that building is in the way, so we only are required to give them forty, uh, sorry, ninety days' notice. Uh, Mr. Nine and I worked out, uh, the language, we made sure we're in good, good, uh, hands that way, and we gave them six months' notice, so they would be well apprised of the anticipation of that building will no longer be standing. And it, and clearly, in those contracts, when we were thinking about renewing them, there's a little bit of language that refers to the city may do something else with these buildings, therefore, there's an out, okay? So legally fine. So essentially, the good neighbors, good renters, uh, I've, I've talked to them, talked to them on the phone, email, all the good stuff, uh, sent, sent a letter to both of them, one, once again, returned back to us. Uh, not, I'm not, I don't want to throw anybody on the bus, but I have before me, right here, the rent payments, and one of our renters is not very good at paying the rent. They owe property taxes, as you know, these are private use for public building, so you can't just go in and use it as a public building, you would be able to. Well, it's privately rented, therefore, we are pr- charge property tax, no different than your home or your commercial property. So that, there's a bill that we send out every year, that's been tough being paid. Uh, so, I think where we're at is September, they have to vacate. In one of these, we're missing every bit of six payments, uh, and no property tax payment. On the other, there's been some property tax payment and a steady payment, so we've got a little bit of both. Um, one has much more inventory than the other, uh, in talking with the hair shop specifically, I don't, I don't know if they want to continue. We did make some pledges that we would try to find some other facilities in Edwardsville, right? And that we could, as a retention policy, we would do that for Standard Motor Company, for example. If we had a building you wanna move over, we'll, we'll retain you here, we'll help. That's the same offer we made, there's nothing, there's really nothing. I, I asked the chamber, hey, do you know of anything, just even in Barter Springs, I mean, keep them close by, uh, asked, why not EDC? There's just simply nothing in Edwardsville that's, you know, number one, if it's, some places are very high for large square foot, it just doesn't work for them. There's no other places really, so I couldn't help them that way. Uh, I would say, if you would want to, that we could maybe waive September's rent. Uh, we could waive some of the back payment, we could waive, for example, uh, some of the, what's remaining of the twenty-twenty-four tax bill. And so you're ta- talking a matter of a few thousand dollars. So those are some of the options, we have to be generous if we want to, and just helping with the transition. We gave them a full six months, and Mr. Nine, when he, he generated back and forth, uh, he, he held the date to the, the ninety day. I s- I said, I, we, we wanted to give him six months, and they've been good, uh, good people, uh, you know, kept the property up as best they could, uh, and all that sort of stuff. So there's some reward there, and, and hey, plenty of notice. So I, I'm ready for the next move, whatever you believe that might be. Uh, we can, I can bring it for a formal, uh, proposal next time if you want, or you can just direct me to say, hey, we can waive. You can do all kinds of, you do anything you want, it's really the city, and you're the city policymaker, you can waive. One of them said, hey, would you waive the rest of the rent? I kinda said, well, that's impossible, but I can ask, that's what I'm doing, I'm just asking. Uh, uh, there is back rent due, waive that. There is, there are, September, I think that's the easy one, because that's a move-out month, they have to absolutely vacate the property, uh, in September. So that may be the easy one, uh, you know, and that sort of thing, but we've had some check problems, that's, it's been pretty tough. And again, I think you gotta ask for something, you know, the worst they could say is no, so they've been asking, hey, can you do this, can you do that? The property in any other circumstance, if we were transitioning that property for use, we would walk through it, we would say, hey, put this back to condition, and that sort of thing. But these are being demoed, so their move-out is fairly easy, take the stuff you brought in with you, and, and vacate the property. So it's fairly simple move-out, we're not, you know, just give us back the keys, for what reason, I don't know, but we're gonna take the air conditioning unit, it's, it's brand new, off of that, recycle it to the community center, we gotta plan. But we're, what we need, that space to, number one, utilities, number two, to put the foundation down. There's just no room in how close that has to be, parking lots, construction material, all that. So the bad news from the city, we've done that, we've said, hey, vacate, uh, you can override me on that if you would like, uh, but as far as guidance, I wanna be good neighbors, wanna reward them, but I wanna give you the facts too, that these are circumstances that we have to, as landlords, have to deal with.
One thing that I've heard, or just i- in our town halls that we've had, um, over the summer, was a lot of our residents actually are working in those, in those businesses. And so that's something that I would, um, consider for, if there's any way, and I don't know if there's a mechanism to enforce this or check on that, but if we're to give them a credit, if that would be some toward a severance or something like that, to give those employees time to find another job. Um, that's taking care of our neighbors, taking care of our residents who are, their jobs are being displaced, and I'm really thankful that we gave them twice as much notice as, as required. I think that was the right thing to do, um, but as far as this payments go, especially, um, and, and I feel for the business owners too, but especially for the, the employees who, um, might be missing a paycheck while they're finding something else.
Josh, off the top, you had anything, if the city were to credit back, but we, we could have a legal document says, when we give you this amount of money, you have to distribute to your employees as part of severance, is that something that, it's a little, little broad, but.
It's, I mean, could you maybe do it, I guess, are you gonna be able to enforce it?
That's.
I, I don't, I wouldn't wanna make it so complex that it's enforceable.
It could be an encouragement, maybe, say, we could, we could waive these couple of things, you got a couple thousand bucks that you didn't have to pay.
I mean, they could encourage to pay them.
We could waive upon group. Wrote a check to them?
And I'd like a list of their employees, um, for, for you to have, so we know how many employees are at each, each location, and then full-time, part-time, and you can kinda, if, if that's something the council wants to do, that's, that's just kind of, and, and I, I appreciate the businesses, they've known for a long time, this is on the way, but the people who, this is their everyday paycheck, I think that's, if we can help that.
Fairly close to home, now, I, I would suggest that there are individuals in the hair shop that rent the space from the primary person, so they're not employed. So how, that's a whole different meeting. Hey, well, again.
Well, that'd be like a ten-ninety.
I'm sorry, it's the other business, uh, it's a hair shop and a liquor store. I think, I think those things are tough.
And if we wanna count them as part of it, I'm okay with that too, I just, I think that in the goal, whether it's ten-ninety-nine or W-two, employee or contractor, helping them, if we're doing any sort of credit, it should be helping these people in the meantime while they're finding.
It's hard to do one without the other as well.
Yeah.
I, I would say that the people in that are paying that other person, they may or may not be paying more credit, so that's everything I would say. And I, I know it's tough, it has to be done, because we can't progress this project at all, sixteen million bucks to keep it moving forward.
And just thinking through that, it might be, like, instead of you paying what you owe us for this, you're going to pay these people that are in your building. You know what I mean?
Yeah, how do we do that?
I just, yeah, I don't, I'm not sure that.
Yeah, control what they, how they use. I, I, I have the feeling, and I think we're all on the same page, we wanna be generous, but how do we go about doing it fairly? Or do we just say?
I don't know.
You know, are we, are we gonna collect unpaid rent, unpaid property taxes?
Well, when was the lease up?
Well.
Couldn't that just be an eviction?
Well, they, we, technically, I suppose, yeah.
I hate to say that, but I like that.
Again, we're tearing the building down, so I mean, at this point. E- even if they had a bad track record in, say, twenty twenty-four, let's just, okay, oh, in any other landlord-renter situation, right? There would be a threshold, we could do something, but we knew we're gonna tear the dang building down, we have these long-term, and long-term folks. The hair shop moved over from the Chris's Sales Building back in the day, so they, they've been there quite a long time. Uh, so I.
But the ninety day was in the lead.
Yeah, it's in, I just extended it, you know, to the s- in full six months, now, the, the ninety days, they're out in July. I didn't think, you know, I, I just think, thought we would be all well-aligned to say, we're giving you plenty of notice, right? So the ninety-day trigger is certainly there.
And to clarify, I wasn't saying we give them any money.
Right.
I'm just saying, if we're giving them a credit, that credit needs to benefit.
Yeah.
The employees, not just the business owner, but.
And I don't mind the idea, I just think it's very difficult, I really do, I think the circumstance between the two places is different in, in a number of ways. So, I'm sorry to put this on your plate, but we have to make a tough decision, and I like the September waiving, it's minimal money. I mean, it's money, but it's, you know, it's at least generosity, you're moving out in September, no rent. That's seventeen fifty total, total money. We have property taxes have not been paid, other than, I'll, there, there's been eight hundred dollars attributed to the property taxes so far. There are a couple thousand bucks, they have to share between the sp- it's, it's done by a formula of space used in the building. Same as our formula for the county, because we, there don't charge us for the whole city at all, just those rented places. So I, you know, advice, uh, any thoughts on, do we enforce, before your move-out, you must have this paid up, and then we will waive September rent? Uh, if you miss any other rents, or you have received bad checks for rents, then this triggers something else, these are real things, so.
It's hard to waive it when they're doing it.
Mm-hmm.
It is.
I don't think, uh, it's a good idea to, it's, it's a rabbit hole you don't wanna go down, having them make sure they give their employees severance.
I get it.
Labor law does not require severance. Yeah, uh, but the September, yeah, good with that one.
It's pretty easy, man, we're just saying, hey, you're, and I can formally give them a letter that says, hey, you're not required to pay that, you get rent, this is your move-out month, make sure your stuff is vacated.
Will they have the entire month of September?
Yeah, we, yes, we, I'm hoping to work with Vogel Anderson on the demo schedule, very soon. If you, if you kinda know this building, just write down, I heard they moved all of the gas units out of the closet, so that's about the area where the building will be demolished to, about a meter, there's a firewall there. So that we'll have some exterior still left on these two next spaces that we absolutely need, because we have nowhere else to go with some of that stuff. But we have to have pods, there's storage stuff in, behind the hair shop, there's a whole bunch of storage, whether we keep it or not, it's still city property, it has to be maintained and inventoried, so we have to get that stuff out. And then we have to get the stuff off the roof that we just put there, HVAC is brand new. And we, and I will waive, they do owe a portion of that money, uh, but on the liquor source side, we'll just waive that, because we're gonna recycle it and not replace one, a new one individually over the community center, we think this one will fit, or they'll make it fit, or we'll get a credit for that and have a new installed community center, which is definitely, so we, that's a plan we have. I guess we died, we've delved down in this pretty, in the end, we have renters, some need to catch up on their payments, we have outstanding property taxes, the city, of course, has already paid that, uh, and then September, so, so far, I've heard September is okay to waive formally, what about the rest of it?
I think that makes it collective.
Mm-hmm.
Collective.
You said six months, six months, she's back, they're back.
Yeah, there's been, there's, we can account for August, September, October, November, December, January, March.
That's for one business, not one.
Not both, I'm not trying to throw, but I'm just saying, I don't wanna embarrass anybody.
No.
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 But we are public landlords, and we gotta have a public discussion, so.
Right, yeah, because it's, it's business, I just, that's, and, and that was my concern with crediting just the owners, if they're the ones not paying the bill, and then everybody, so they're collecting money or benefiting from it, and the employees who are, have no control over it.
I think the council having this discussion says we considered these things, and we're trying to be generous, and we're trying to be neighborly. At the same time, my job to be business, that's what I do, and I, my encouragement would be, let's do business, let's do fair, September. The rest of it, we'll try to collect the best we can, and then if we're vacating, before that's done, we'll have to have a separate agreement, and we'll engage our legal, try to get some of that written down, so we don't have to go to collections. And I'll bring that to you and say, do you want to do this? You may have a different outlook in October.
If they choose to leave sooner, then they would not be penalized for that.
No, no penalty. They could vacate at any time between now and then. I have direction, I think there's consensus, and that's what I needed. Thank you, sorry for that one, sorry to belabor here, uh, K thirty-two cones, and, uh, that was a good question by Garrett Malott. Uh, I didn't know the answer to it, and neither did K dot until five-twenty-four today. So essentially, that is Atmos Gas, uh, I'm sorry, Atmos Energy Gas, and near the Lake of the Forest, they're doing some, they have two locations along there, and s- north and south side of the K thirty-two, they need the cones on occasion, because they're gonna be working from the road and modifying gas lines, that's what they're doing.
Well, I was just curious, because they've been there for a couple of weeks.
They have.
There's a sign that's getting ready to get lit up, I wonder what they're doing. My water was out the other day in the same place it breaks all the time.
Yeah, down by that.
BPU, you know, that we, I guess, the pilot tech, we painted them. They don't contact their customers when they're gonna cut your water.
Nor the city, they tend to.
So for twelve hours, you're without water, you know, unfortunately, at least had your stool flushed and, and all of that.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry to hear about that, and they, they are notorious for not telling, and it's, it's every utility, unless they're gonna completely close the road and tear it out, there's kinda no telling, so.
Well, there's no contact in, on the weekend either, you can't talk to anybody at all. I had an argument with an AI chat, so, they, they don't like the AI. But thank you.
Yeah, no worries at all, just everybody knows on the same information, same question asked, uh, Buckey's Sewer. We went from direct conversations with, with their representation, and then the unified government became the primary. And it, because Buckey's didn't buy the amount of property that was originally proposed, so it would've taken them most of the way of the sewer area, if you will, from the I-seventy rampish area that, the Speedway, all the way to Chateau Avalon-ish, right, kind of that direction. And so they didn't buy that amount of property, which left them a large gap, uh, between their end of the property and our sewer connection, okay? So the unified government says, this is unified government, this is Buckey's, and then there's Edwardsville. So who is the players, and, and, you know, and how do we do this? A few discussions, and then it suddenly ended, and you might have been keeping up with that, there was some legal hurdles of getting. A few discussions, and then it suddenly ended. And you might have been keeping up with that, there were some legal hurdles of getting a Speedway property, they already should have dug ground, you know, a few weeks ago, now it's gonna be May-ish, that's where. Four thirty, four fifty three tonight is that, uh, they gave me an update. They have decided at their administrative level that Edwardsville will be the primary. So, essentially, we'll be the server. Bucky's will build the sewer, and, and they will connect, and we will be the billing agent. So, it will be our sewer connection, like originally proposed, but that was, that was the whole intent. If they built it the whole way, and they owned the land the whole way almost, it would be us. What they're saying is they're okay with that kind of undeveloped land that's actually in Wyandotte County, not owned by, uh, Bucky's, that we would be their utility server. They, they're just, I don't think they're capital capacity, they didn't want to buy it from us, they wanted, you know, we talked about in, internal credits and not billing for us. Because if they don't bill us fifty thousand a month, we keep fifty thousand a month and use it for something else, right? But now, we'd be able to, there will be a connection fee, and there will be a customer fee, right? Otherwise, we wouldn't, we get that in perpetuity, because there's, it's metered ramp. So, the next step is, we need to give them what the Unified Gate Government will now have to, we kind of jointly did it in some way, but it was their letter. We have to give them some sort of notice that will service that, reengage, uh, their representatives directly. So, that's, that's really the next, uh, phase, and what we'll have to do is figure out a billing and collection. Will we work with that through the Unified Government? So, we may need to engage legal, it just depends on what approach that we want to take. Now, if you say they owe fifty million dollars, no, and they're gonna say, you, you may have to service this regardless. So, there's, some of these things that they could insert, that we have to be careful with. So, we need to go and get, what are, what's our legal footing? Uh, they're gonna ask us, hey, are you, it's there, and we can service them, they build that line to that, we can service them, so now they want to know, are you going to service us? And depending on our answer, that's how we progress next. The, I mentioned Scannell with some feedback, that wasn't very positive. But in the end, that sewer agreement is pretty solid, and the reason it is, is there's a fee, and they dedicated all the sewer to us. What Bucky's cannot do is dedicate their run under U G all that far to us, so it won't be our sewer until they connect. So, the difference between Scannell and outside, what we call extraterritorial jurisdiction, Bonner Springs, now it's KCK. The difference is, our ride away, that sort of thing, all that was dedicated under Scannell, and they had a hundred thousand dollar connection fee. U G, that, that's way above what they do. It's completely way above their, their fees, and they were surprised. Our threshold was a hundred and twenty-five thousand. It matches some of the other payments that Bucky's has paid. Now, they'll do some research about where that is, uh, but a one hundred twenty-five thousand dollar connection fee, we don't have to stay with that. But you start creeping up on some of these things, and it, if you charge them so much money, they'll just build it themselves around, right? And so, we don't get a customer, we don't do these other things. No matter what, we have a sewer and Unified Government, Kansas City, Kansas, fairly deep in the ground. Not had any gallons run through it. The most gallon so far is eight thousand gallons. We don't have leaks, it's pretty deep, we have all the responsibility and no income on it. None. So, these big breaks on that particular line and some others, that's, just bear with me, that's bonded money, it's very expensive. We don't have that kind of cash that we can just go and pay eight hundred thousand, because it would break us, right? That's something. This will be one way you add a customer. It doesn't ma- it doesn't impact our capacity. They're about thirty-five thousand gallons a day. The difference is, Scannell is one hundred thousand max capacity a day. There's, there's the difference. Bucky's doesn't have too many restrooms, they have enough, but it's not great big. It's not like a hotel, right?
Yeah, they've got a lot.
Hundreds of urinals in those rooms.
But like, compared to the hotel, the way that showers and all this other stuff is, that their, their production per gallon per day is about thirty-five thousand. When Scannell is gonna produce about a hundred thousand gallons per day.
How do you think the agreement, and stop me if I'm saying too much, but Scannell should never be used as a template for anything we ever do again. I think our, our agreement did not protect our city, um.
Well, you've got sewer that's in your town that you own. Now, all that sewer, now, all, all the other development up there can use it. That's, that was the only benefit in that particular one, and we didn't pay a dime for any of it. I think if you're gonna do it, that's at least a reasonable template, if it's in your town, or on your ride away.
Which, yeah, and it, and it's not, um, because it's benefiting Bonners Development, where this is benefiting the U G Development, instead of Unified Government trying to procure, procure businesses to the entire county, it's us serving Kansas City, Kansas Business, that's specifically going to limit what we can develop on our side of the highway. And so, I think it's really important that we look at long term. If, if we're going to let, if we're gonna partner with them, that it needs to be not a one-time payment, but potentially a long-term, um, ongoing payment, some sort of, and I know I've said CID before, and that's the wrong sort of tax, but it, it could be a, a portion of sales tax. I, I would be a lot more, I think, excited about a partnership where it's, hey, we realize that because we're putting this huge gas station, that's going to limit what's gonna go on our side of the highway, um, being partners within that community and saying, hey, U G, let's, let's be partners on that for a long-term thing, so it's not just, hey, here's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which we know in the grand scheme of things won't add up to a whole lot. And then, and then it limits what we can do over here. We just get the negative consequence of heavier traffic, light pollution, all the things going on with no long-term benefit. And so, if we could maneuver this to have a long-term benefit forever as well, I think that would be beneficial.
But yeah, and I think we can align up certain things. We gotta be careful what we talk about right here, because we may be contract negotiations, so we want to be careful. Um, if there, uh, I, I threw out these, you want to throw these great big numbers at them, that's, that's, it's just not in line with how it works, so we can't be, we don't want to be the odd, so unique that it's maybe not lawful. So, we want to be careful, we want to go, we are the servicing utility, so how do we do that and still make benefit to everyone, right? And, and without impacting on our side what could go there. Think of the Hard Rock, that was gonna be more than Scannell's, hundred thousand, right? Hotel, a lot of water, right? There's a lot of sewer gonna go down that sewer pipe. And so, but our capacity is still there. There's another line that's easily connectable, that's under the highway too. So, there's a second, they were smart enough to put two of those through there. So, if, if a second force main or something is needed, we have that capacity. And we have the capacity downhill, if you want. So, it goes to, really goes to Chateau Avalon, and then it comes to, I think, Plant Twenty, which is downhill, south, so quite a, quite a long way.
There's two sewer lines?
There's actually two pipes. Yeah, yeah. Or, there, there's either, the pipes are there, or there has a capacity, you can fit another one, I think. They drilled it that way.
What's the total capacity?
I'm sorry.
What's the total?
I, I don't know off the top of my head without reading the document. The whole line, you mean? Uh, that's, this hundred thousand from Scannell, and then you add anything of those others, it won't, it won't fill up the capacity. We still have the capacity. So, Brian's not here, but I'd have to read the document. It's, it, there's plenty of it, because it's, there's maximum flows, and then there's those daily gallons. And we, we, we aren't touching that even with, even if you put the Hard Rock on.
Wasn't it around two hundred twenty to two hundred fifty thousand, I thought, when they first put it in?
It's a pretty big number. I'll get you that, I'll get to that. I mean, it's nice to know. This, where this is, is connects on that force main, it's gonna shoot right up. It's not very long, so, and we scheduled this as a temporary connection. The reason that is, should we have other developments that then somehow is impacted, this is impacting that, they have to figure out a way around. So, that would be something that we're provisionally, we'd say, this is a temporary connection. It could be indefinite in some ways, but temporary in the sense that we would have the leverage then to force them to this connection.
Is there anything else envisioned up there besides Bucky's?
Uh, not, you mean, that immediate area?
Yeah, and if Bucky's a go, is it a go project?
Yeah, absolutely.
And is there something else gonna be in there with them? I mean, they're talking about the hotel by the casino, but that'll be on a different line entirely.
Yeah, I presume, yeah. I presume it's already on the existing, I presume they tied in, yeah. The, 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 the most direct route for Bucky's is that route along kind of that, the street there, to the Chateau Avalon where ours intersects right there.
So, how, how unique is this in, like, just say, the, the state of Kansas, how unique is it for the city? You got three entities, four entities. You have Bonner Springs, Edwardsville. Edwardsville owns what they gave us, plus what we put in.
Yeah.
Into KCK through U G. I mean, what kind of a precedent is there on setting up what the fees would be on that? Is there a place where you could research that and find out where you don't really make a map when you say, oh, one million dollars to hook up to it, and fifty thousand dollars a month for service?
Nah, because we already have an ordinance, the fee ordinance, that says commercial, uh, sewer service is this much, you know, right? There's a, there's a fee already associated. Now, precedence wise, now, legal might speak to this, but we already have a precedence in that we, we've said a hundred thousand dollars to connect to this extraterritorial. This is, we don't get any dedication, we just get sewer flow, right? Where there are customers of ours, and they're gonna connect to our force main, and that's a hundred twenty-five thousand, or whatever we want it to be. Uh, but that, that's a, there are some thresholds that they're kind of used to paying. Uh, KCK wouldn't have charged them near that much at all.
KCK gives everything away.
Yeah, no, that's, again, I'm just comparatively, that, they were, their, their fees are different than ours, and that's, that's them for us, we're looking out for us. But we're gonna continue to own the force main, so.
But then we're going into them, you know, so they could always, that's when I always say that.
Force main is up at Chateau Avalon, it's kind of, so if you think of.
Big brother.
It's actually over here.
So, it goes.
Extraterritorial, yeah, exactly. So, I, I guess for all that being said, we need to sit down, we need to get the folks back from Bucky's, who've already been, uh, given, uh, this information, this is new, uh, to come back to Edwardsville, and so, we're gonna need a, uh, some sort of consensus plan at some point. So, that will be the next step, is to say, here are the ideas, uh, this is what we can do legally, because we need that as a utility. And they say, hey, you're available to connect, are we required to? So, in other words, what if we say, you can't connect at all, right? And there, these, there is some, there's some indication, you know, that they have, you know, it's like, we expect to be able to do so somewhere, connect to the sewer, we're gonna build a property. So, if that's us, or if that's U G or somebody, we gotta figure that out. If there's an expectation, do we have to honor it? And then, what are the fee structure outside of our ordinance? Because this connection fee is extraterritorial, therefore, we can, we can offer up a connection fee. But they're a lifetime customer in the sense of, as long as they're connected, they'll be paying us, okay? And there's a bill that, we get billed by the U G to process it, and then we, they pay the bill to cover the overhead, so it's gonna be an added customer. It will not impact to any drastic degree our expected, anticipated, hopeful of development and their, the sewer of volume that they would have. Including, the, the, the one we should think about the most is something similar to the Hard Rock Hotel, which is gonna have a substantial amount of volume per day.
So, I think it would be important for us to know the overall capacity, and then for certain, if we can double check on Bucky's, and, and I think the question that I have really in my mind is, when we were brought the information regarding the Scannell, um, flow usage, we were told it's minimal. There's just, it's, it's, it's just a couple of toilets, no big deal, there's not gonna be that many people up there. And so, when I'm hearing that this very minimal development is a hundred thousand in Bucky's, and I've been to Bucky's maybe twice, not a whole lot, but I mean, it was like a hundred.
Yeah.
Toilet, and women's bathroom, just constantly flushing, like constantly, people go there just to go to the bathroom. And so, I, I just, it's, I, I, I feel like either somebody really didn't tell us the story when they were saying, oh, it's just a couple of toilets, no big deal, a hundred thousand dollars, or a thirty-five thousand gallon is maybe on, and so, that would be, I think, important.
Their, that's their data. Their, their, this is what they're saying they told us, and the Unified Government, and they compare it for all their other stores, so they're just saying.
That's only twenty-one thousand flushes in a twenty-four hour period.
Twenty-one thousand flushes?
Yeah, everything's one point six gallons.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
That's only twenty-one thousand. But in residential, if the utilities are there, you have to offer it to the person building the house. Now, they don't have to accept it. You know, unless there's an ordinance, we know you can't put a septic tank in because you don't have an A. In residential, if that water lines run down there, you have to let them connect to it.
Yeah, I, I do think there is something that we have to research, because you wouldn't want to know that, because if you want to say no, you may not be able to. That's, that's what we want to know. So, I'll charge Mr. Nye with doing that research, uh, and then I'll get you the, everyone, the total volume, uh, that, that, that line particularly is supposed to support.
I just feel like this is a situation where, again, the U G gets the economic development, and we get, we get the crap, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Literally.
Literally, yeah. So, I will bring, and then I'll bring you some plan. I need to speak with those folks again, because I haven't been in direct contact with them, and I'll tell you what their thoughts are, and we'll go from there, so.
I always call the Texas town that has, has them in there, they're all over I thirty-five.
They, yeah, they should be able to come up with something, this is what we did here, and this is what.
Oh, yeah, that, they're, they're definitely, that's where they got, the Springfield store is absolutely where they got their numbers, I mean, it, it, this is gonna be slightly bigger than that, so they, they, there's, I, they're the ones that gave me the number. And I was surprised, to be honest with you, going back through all the research to see the hundred thousand dollar of Snell, Snell, but they, remember, they had three buildings, now they have five. So, it's like, okay, so a lot of changes over those years.
We'll, we'll deliver.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That's what I have. Sorry for the delay.
Uh, Councilman Mullin? Councilman Bishop?
Yeah, I, uh, I have a serious comment here. I'm the most qualified person in this room and in parts of the city. I should be on the plant, I should be planning, on the planning with the buildings. I'm free, I'm available, and I was at the beginning, but Mary, you removed me off of that. And no offense, Mr. Mullin, Ms. Eckox, my family's been doing this since nineteen fifty-one. My grandfather built in this range model. I should be sitting right there to, to try to put things maybe into layman terms rather than engineering terms. And I'm just completely upset about that, because you're not using your counsel the way you should. And I know why you did that. I'm not gonna belabor that now, but, uh, it just, I don't get it. That's all I got to say.
Councilman Mullin?
I kind of tend to agree with that. The council, as far as I'm concerned, hasn't been involved in any of the planning on this building, you know, except for voting, you know, to, to get the bonds and all the money and all that. I mean, our input, our input should be as valuable as anybody else's input. I've been around here long enough, and I should know a little bit about how the inside of the building should look. I just feel like I'm completely left out on that, and, uh, I think there, there, all five of us sitting up there have got our own little pieces of expertise that could be thrown into this project, as far as, well, maybe as a teacher, I would know a little bit about maybe setting up some hall lecture hall kind of thing. Police would represent, fire could represent, plus the overall building, human resource, you know, the office space, and I just feel like, like, I've been completely left out of this whole thing, except saying, yeah, let's build it, let's get sixteen million dollars and build it. I've had absolutely no input in that, and that's the way, I agree with you mark on that, but anyway, you know, whatever happens, whatever happens. One of mine got blocked off, because I was gonna ask about the Bucky's sewer agreement, and I brought that up before I could ask it. Um, I, I want to compliment, he's not here now, but Brian Hutchinson, I, I really want to compliment that man on the job that he does for the city of Public Works. I think he's really aggressive. I think he really researches the way he should research, and he's got the total interest of Edwardville at heart. And, you know, I just, I'm really appreciative of the work that he does. We compliment police, we compliment fire, we compliment administrative, well, he needs his compliments too. So, I want to make sure that that gets to him, if you wouldn't mind doing that for me. I see him a lot out doing things, and, you know, I, I just don't think we could do too much better than that. Um, I want to ask, Mr. Nye, I want to ask you something after the meeting. I don't want to bring it up in here, but I've got something I want to ask. You said, well, that, uh, I wanted to ask about, has there been anything done with the CPPS board on the sign at the cemetery? We're gonna have Memorial Day coming up before too long, and there's usually somewhere between twenty and sixty people up there for that. I think that we should need to have something up there for that. Margaret, if you could.
Yes.
Yeah, we, uh, we have the rules.
Right.
Uh, you did, I, I'm presuming that they presented the rules, and then the next piece is how the sign will actually look. And so, as soon as the CPPS board says, we like this sign, I think we can go ahead and put it up, but we don't have a rendering of the sign just yet. We just have, we found what we believe to be the rules, fairly simple, uh, not, not a great big board of them, but now we need the sign. Now, I think that's where we're at today on the sign.
And I think, you know, and since you said that, I didn't think of it that way, but we have entrance to Edwardville sign, welcome to Edwardville signs. That layout is pretty cool. Maybe we could incorporate that kind of a design and a plan into a signage at the cemetery, you know, the color of the sign and so forth. I mean, there's experts, there's people around that can do that. You know, I think sometimes we overlook some of the local regions. I mean, there's experts, there's people around that can do that, you know, I think sometimes we overlook some of the local resources that we have around here, so.
They were refurbished by Young Signs.
Right.
Recently, those, those.
They, you know, they, there's people that can design those, maybe the junior college has got a graphic arts class that can design something, or, you know, I mean, there's, there's resources out there to look at that kind of stuff. So, that's all the little notes I have, um. Thank you.
Councilman Trevor?
Uh, one, two second, what, uh, Councilmember Mullin said about Brian Hutchinson, he's doing a wonderful job, excited with these park improvements that I think have been a long time coming. Um, what is city cleanup day, May?
Is it third Saturday in May? There's a date, I mean, it's, Saturday in May, I'm sorry, I will, can we clean up date it? You looking at it now? Can we send that out to you?
Is there some way we could get that on the city webpage or something, that, that way people know to start
Yep.
Cleaning up, cleaning out.
It's always the third Saturday, because that's hazardous waste dump too.
Yeah, that's what I thought, the third in May, third Saturday.
I thought so too, but it, and
We'll verify.
Whatever it is, if some, if it could get posted on the webpage, that way people can
Yep.
Get that in the back of their mind, so.
Absolutely.
Do we, do we still get to do hazardous waste, since we're Edwardsville?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
I remember there was a conflict about that a year ago.
That's all really about, we're not, we're not in their waste management agreement, because we have our own, and that's a Kansas City, Kansas facility, and the yard waste as well. And there was a, there was a proposal that they would voucher and or bill us once a year by the number of people who are, but so far, I don't know where that stands.
We don't.
Well, by the way, sorry, so right now, you're not paying.
Right, well, that's why we monitor who comes to ours, because
Yeah, absolutely.
We pay for that service, so.
They're, they did have some of our folks take some stuff to dumpster days of their, their own KCK, so I mean, it's okay, and if they want to bill us, uh, it wasn't very expensive at all, it was probably worth it to get the cleanup, right? With the hazardous waste off our, you know, out of our garages.
The store model thing a while ago.
Sorry.
That's all I have, thank you, thank you, Garrett.
Councilman Etc., a comment? Gosh, fruitless, I'll make it quick. Um, quick reminder, the Edwardsville Historical Society meeting, first meeting, is this Wednesday at ten AM in the training room where we vote. And so anyone that wants to be a part of that is welcome to, um, come and, and be a part, um, even if you don't know a lot of history, you can come learn history of, of our community, and I think that'll be great. Um, um, Edwardsville Mobile Pantry, we had last, uh, Saturday, or the Saturday before last, we were able to serve ten thousand seven hundred forty-five pounds of groceries to six hundred and sixty-eight people. And, um, for the year two thousand twenty-four, we were able to serve sixty-four thousand thirty-six pounds of food to thirty-six hundred and forty-eight people. And so, just a tremendous, tremendous effort by our faithful volunteers, community partners, it takes a lot of hands to pull that off. Um, but there is a lot of need in and around our community, and it is so beneficial to those people. Um, I, I know I've been in communication with, uh, with Mark about the salary study, and so hopefully, uh, council will be getting that information soon, so we can be in the loop on that. Um, just a quick note, as far as building committees and other committees, when we're doing something outside of the public meeting, there's a limit to how many council members can be a part. Or we're going to be in violation of COMA, the Kansas Open Meetings Act, and so we cannot have a, a quorum in any of those outside meetings, we have to do everything with a quorum in the public. Um, and some of those things would just be, I mean, we'd be here until midnight every meeting, if we're going over all the details with the entire, um, meeting, so, so that's, that's scheduled to such, I believe we're going to have pretty soon, a couple of weeks, back before the entire council for discussion.
Yep.
A detailed discussion, hopefully, but, but if, if everyone could be a part, that'd be great, it just, it just isn't reality. Um, so anyway, great year, um, so far on the, on the mobile pantry, great things coming ahead, and we'll call it at that.